Give us all that we need in the past and will continue to give us all we need in the future. For faith, to see your loving purposes unfold in all that is happening in our time. For faith to be calm and brave in the face of any dangers we may meet while doing our duty. For faith to believe in the power of your love to melt our hearts and totally remove our sins from us. For faith to put our trust in love rather than in force when other people harden their hearts against us. For faith to believe in the ultimate victory of your Holy Spirit over disease and death and all powers of darkness. For faith to learn from any sufferings that you call us to endure. For faith to leave in your hands the welfare of our dear ones. And faith to take up the care of those you have given us to lead. Oh Lord, our ancestors were justified by their trust in you. Rid our hearts of all pointless anxieties and paralyzing fears. Give us a cheerful, buoyant spirit and peace in doing your will. For your sons' sake we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Ceremonial matters, proclamations, employee recognitions?
No employee recognitions this morning, Mayor.
Council comments?
Good morning. I wanted to simply acknowledge our city attorney this morning and thank him for his guidance and counsel to me last night. I appreciate it and respect the work you're doing and thank you for doing that. So, appreciate it.
I attended the Market Square redevelopment meeting last week. Just to give you a little update, the construction's on schedule. Hopefully it'll be completed in October. We're going through with the naming rights and that will be presented to the council at a later date. As far as donations and contributions, we still are a little short. So I remind everybody that used to make a lot of donations, Hill Country Memorial Foundation. Well, you do have Market Square, Market Pots, and it is 501(c). And so when you want to leave memorials or contributions, certainly a good place, be spent right, you'll see it. You can use it. So it's just a reminder that that's available for those people looking for charitable contributions. Thank you.
No comment. All right. Let's go to item six, the consent agenda, which is the approval of city council minutes for the following meetings. May 25th, the work session, May 30th, a special meeting, and June 6th, a regular meeting.
And we've recently accepted the minutes.
Motion second to approve these as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven A, a conditional use permit for property located at 720 South Adams, requested by Kevin Spragons with VEI. We'll first hear from Mr. Spragons and then have the staff report at a public hearing and leading to action if you, yes, leave to action. Mr. Spragons, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Kevin Spragons, VEI Consulting Engineers. We, the item that is in front of you tonight is, I'm sorry, this morning, is a CUP request. And it is only for, just want to make sure there's a clarification, the CUP request is only for the drive-through. I don't know if you've got the site plans and everything up. Do you want to put those up now?
We have it in our pocket, but for the benefit of the audience, if you would, the site plan. It's difficult to read.
Is that something that I'm supposed to? So while we're waiting on that, this is a special building for us because it's our building. We're planning to move VEI into this building. We're also planning to move drive-through cleaners to this building. So that's why you have the drive-through request. So as some of you may know and may use our cleaners on Highway Street, it is too small and we need to move. We've been successful on that, which is, we're very grateful that everyone uses us and uses our business and are excited about the move. So we are planning to put the drive-through and the cleaners on the end of that building if you want to move down to the site plan. So just to give you all background, we are planning to put the cleaners on the end, which is why we're having the drive-through request. As staff has stated in the, in the report, it does allow for, for car stacking, which is plenty of room for us. We're also planning to put, like I said, put the engineering office upstairs along with other professionals that want to go upstairs. Maybe looking at putting our print business downstairs and maybe even, and then also my daughter's floral business downstairs. And there's, there's some other retail that's also available. This site is located in between two other drive-through locations. To the north, you've got Happy Bank, and to the south, Guadalupe Bank. So drive-through area is no stranger to, to, to this part of South Adams Street. P&amp;Z already approved our site plan. P&amp;Z already approved our corridor plan. We're very proud of the building that was designed. I'd like to say that I was part of that process, but as you know, I just make sure that it doesn't fall down and get it built and paid for. So as Leslie did, put this vision together along with Brandon, who's here today, and then Randy with SKT. So we have met all the criteria. As staff has put together the background information and I'm here to answer any questions. I want to ask for approval.
Thank you. We'll go to staff report now and during the public hearing, there may be some questions for you, Kevin.
All right. Thank you.
Anna?
Thank you, Kevin. So the only thing staff has to add, as he said, planning and zoning met and did recommend approval. And the only conditions really that staff would put on it is that the conditional use permit for this drive-through is specific to a drive-through or dry cleaner, personal service use. If you look at the site plans and compare the two, or I guess there'd be three drive-throughs now. The banks allow more stacking on the rear of the property and the access point for this drive-through is on the, on the north side. And so it, so it allows for limited stacking, so we wouldn't want to see a more intensive drive-through use as at a restaurant or anything that would be more intensive than, than a dry cleaner or personal service use. But yeah, the, the building itself is a very attractive design and meets the entry corridor design guidelines. And I think from the design and development standpoint, staff approves, appreciates that it's a multi-use development. It's not a single, single use. So I think it'll be a nice addition to South Adams, but just limiting that, that drive-through to the, to the proposed dry cleaner use.
All right. Let's go to public hearing. I move we go from public, from regular session to public hearing. Motion second to go from regular into public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Anyone here to speak on this issue? Everybody's thoroughly happy. I move we go from public hearing to the regular session. Motion second to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All righty. Opposed? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Spragons?
Yes, I do have one. Kevin, you mentioned there's additional retail space there. One of the challenges I see in town is the amount of parking relative to restaurants. They, once they become very popular, they become very popular very quickly. So is there room, you may not know at this point if you have that client, I don't know, but is there significant parking expansion if you do obtain one of those, a restaurant client?
So we don't know at this time. Right now, we're just trying to make sure we can get through this process. But we have parked for retail and professional services. If a restaurant tries to go in or wants to go in, then we have to adjust our parking quarter. So it's all based on the parking. Everything's laid out, what you're supposed to follow, as far as the number of seats and so on. And so if we do make that adjustment, then we have to come up with and show staff that we need parking that's required. Thank you.
Kevin, two things. One, this is beautiful and I love it. And so thank you to you and your team for putting this together. I hope we see more development like this.
Yeah, it's awesome, isn't it? I was like, wow, this is great, guys.
And I appreciate the, I saw in the notes that there's going to be a small sitting area in front. And I know, I know we're here to discuss the, the drive-through, but I appreciate that y'all are using the previous pavers and there's going to be some green space there. I think that'll look really nice.
Thank you.
Anything else? You ready to move to consider it? All right. Let's take action on this cut request as per section 3.210 to allow drive-through or driving facilities for the property mentioned and presented located at 720 South Adams Street.
Make a motion to approve. 720 South Adams, the, I guess it's C-2312.
C-2312. Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve this cut request. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item seven B, consider the approval of resolution 2023-12R approving the acquisition and lease purchase financing of SAN, Storage Area and Network Equipment and Switches with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Financing. So Krista, you want to talk to us about this?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and Council. This resolution, 2023-12R, would be approving the acquisition and lease purchase financing over three years with U.S. Bancorp. We've done business with U.S. Bancorp in the past on our electric meters. We had no issues. We also have already approved for this purchase in the 2023 budget for $30,400. So we would come in slightly under budget. No interest payment for this first year, so the principal payment would be $27,282.8. Staff is recommending your approval.
Any questions?
If you have questions, Eric gets here as well to detail about the storage area.
Yeah, Eric and I spoke about this yesterday, but just for the public areas, this is for pod-based services. It's not for capital.
Eric, can you clarify that for us, please?
Mr. Riley, did you get questions specifically in regards to the SAN device?
Well, you and I discussed yesterday. I'm just doing the audience here that we're not buying new hardware. We're buying a service.
For, for the SAN, we are replacing an aging piece of equipment that we had for the past eight years. And so this will be a device we'll have installed locally.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Clinton, is there a threshold for cost on these sorts of things? I know this, section three is authorizing you to execute the lease. What's the threshold for what comes to council? This is what you do.
I can approve anything up to $50,000. We, we generally like to bring these to council just to make you aware of these purchases. If that's something that you want us to hold a little bit closer to in the future, we don't have to include some of these items on the agenda. Again, that, that's purchasing, our purchasing policy that reflects state law requirements for, for limits that require council approval for those that.
So just to say out loud for those observing, this was an approved amount for fiscal year 2023, $30,400 as this year's lease purchase finance in financing, correct?
Right.
Did I say that correctly? Okay. So it's approval of an already approved budget.
And this one's a little bit different. The, the total cost of this is going to be, we talked about this last time, about $75,000. It's right in that range. So it is over that $50,000, but this, this first annual payment is around $30,000.
All right.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve resolution 2023-12R approving the acquisition and lease purchase of this SAN with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Motion carries. We now move to item eight. Eight A is to consider the city Fredericksburg policy or update or proclamation policy as on city recognition. Counsel, you remember that I asked for this to be done and, and you, the ones, the view that I talked to, I think everybody agreed that we also have some written policies because we're going to be asked quite a bit to do recognitions, proclamations, and honor policy and wanted to specify some purposes. So Shelley, do you want to give us any?
Is there any kind of recommendation from staff?
So it would be beneficial if we did have a policy so that we know what to request from y'all and to make sure that we also follow the guidelines and so the public is aware as well.
Okay. This doesn't supplant anything. This is new, right?
This is new.
So you see, mayoral recognitions through letter, read at city council meeting, certificates of recognition, mayoral letter, welcome, recognition, congratulations, celebrations, and proclamations proclaiming a public or official announcement in honor of significant events, organizations, and persons who have made a significant contribution to the community. And then you see the requirements there. Any, what are your thoughts about the specifics?
Well, Market Square actually has some policies written about monuments and what else. One of them's got to be in, which I'm not saying we need to do that, but you could look at some of theirs and possibly look at, of course, they have a dollar amounts usually attached to it, so that's not necessary in place, but.
You want to table this until you, we've had more opportunity?
I think we ought to do a little research on a little recommendations.
Not a huge hurry. Anybody else?
My only comment is that we need to have, how is this going to be shared? Does we need to have some on the website, a certain page, and how, not, it doesn't have to be in the policy, but just how we're going to present this? Is there going to be an online form? How, how people camera us? I didn't see anything on the website now about this.
No, I had drafted one and was going to put it on the website as soon as I got approval, but then this came up. So we will put it on the website. There will be a central place to apply for it. There will be a form and with some draft recommendations for proclamation, which is basically what I do now when I get a request.
Part of the thought is, it's kind of like on the council, if we want items, if there's two members that, that approve, a bit be brought to the city council. Maybe a thought.
We can look into that. This was mainly for, because I get requests all the time, and so I send them to the mayor and ask him yes or no. So this was mainly for a guideline for staff to know which ones we are, you know, sometimes you get them for a one-year-old birthday. And so it's those hundred requests that we need to have guidelines on.
You want to?
Table it.
Want to table it and come back to it? All right. Can you, Tony, you may have said this, would you be specific about what you'd like to, where you'd like to go with it? Do you want to do some more research to do what, find what?
Well, you can always look at other cities, see what they, if the cities are comparable, I guess.
This one is from another city, city of San Angelo. I've looked at several different cities. They kind of are all over the place.
Do you see any obvious gaps you'd like to see built or just like to have more options?
Maybe more options.
So Shelley, just to comment, this is just simply to streamline the process. That's the whole idea.
Right, right.
Me, I think it makes, it makes sense. It removes some ambiguity. I, to me, it looks, looks reasonable just on the outskirts.
Okay. Well, then why don't you, I think, as Tony's request, is could we pursue another couple of others to look at, compare? Then we'll come back to this. Is that okay, counsel? All right. And we'll table that. Item eight B is to discuss a charter review committee and the composition of the committee.
Okay, Mayor and Council, let me get this presentation pulled up here. While we're waiting for that to come up on the screen here, this is very similar to a presentation that I gave back in April. We discussed reforming the charter review committee during the council campaign. One of the council candidates mentioned that there was a, a certain portion of our charter that hadn't been updated from the 2019 legislative session. So there are a lot of updates that need to be made legal or otherwise. So just going through the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history, the composition of the charter review committee, the previous charter review committee. We have the members listed. We'll talk just briefly about what the 2016 charter amendments included, and then we'll talk about process and schedule. So again, the original charter was established in 1990. The 2015 city council appointed a charter review committee. The charter hadn't been reviewed in 25 years. So a committee was charged over about six months to review each article and provide recommendations for amendment to the city charter. Regarding the requirements, all members have to be city residents. Ideally, this, this group would be very diverse, represent the business community. It may also and has, the last time, included former mayor, council members. Staff support is also included on representation in this group, ex officio members, including city manager, city attorney, and city secretary last time. This is the previous charter review committee. You can see the folks listed here. There are a lot of those, those folks still around. And I've, I've heard from a few of them, as we've discussed reforming this, that are interested in getting back on this committee. And of course, you see the ex officio members, the former city manager, former city attorney, and the former city secretary. So the 2016 charter amendment, amendments included 29 individual amendments that were included on the 2016 May ballot. They were individually listed. There was not a box you could check to vote for against all of them. Several of the amendments just included minor language changes. There were a number of changes that were required by state law. So again, as we go through this, there's just a lot of updates that need to be made. This would be something that we would likely report back to the council on a monthly basis. Some of the major issues that were being discussed as part of the amendments. So in terms of the process, the, the last summer around, the committee began their work in August of that year. I've reviewed all 12 articles over about a six-month period, brought those proposed amendments back to the council. Were approved by the council January 2016 for, and they were included on the ballot for again, May 2016. So I would propose a similar schedule. We have talked at the staff level about advertising for a position on the charter review committee using the same form that we use for boards and commissions. If the council's interested in someone serving on that charter review committee, we can distribute that form, that application to them. We can advertise this over the next couple of weeks, bring it back in either the first or the second meeting in July. You can make your selection for the entire committee, the number, the composition, who you want on there. And we can start this again in August of this year or through the end of the year. Looking forward to getting these proposed amendments on the ballot next May. So that's generally what we're looking at doing. If it's the preference of the council to proceed with this, the charter does need to be updated in a couple of locations. And we can structure the feedback that we get from the group. We can establish that along. We can establish that along with, with the members, again, at the council's pleasure. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question on the number. Was 15 people too many? Was it, just as we're thinking of?
I know Tim Dooley was on the, the committee. Tim might weigh in on that. I, I was not heavily involved in, in the process back then.
Okay, I don't think 15 too many, but I think 18.
I think that 15 is a good number. It's, it's, it gives you an opportunity to have at least a quorum at the meetings and make sure you do, because not everybody will be there all the time. You get beyond 15 or so and it gets to be really cumbersome. So I think 15 is a good number. The most important thing, of course, I think, is the diversity of the group. And you don't want 15 people that are all thinking the same, I don't think. But anyway, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Did you want to propose candidates today, or do you want us to think about it and come back?
So if it's the council's preference to use that same form that we use for boards and commissions, we can advertise the opportunity and make those forms available. If you know of anyone that may be interested, we would ask that you make contact with those individuals. We can provide the form to them. Once we collect those over a two or three week period, you want to try to get back together and make a decision, the first meeting in July versus the second meeting? That would be my recommendation. We can discuss those. You can make your selection at that meeting. We can establish the schedule and move forward.
Does that sound good to you, Council? What do you think?
I think that's a good idea.
I agree.
Well, just to be clear, sorry, that's two weeks away. Is that enough time to add, advertise and get the word out? So we'll have our list, the people, and then an executive session.
Would you recommend that there be a public call?
I guess that's what we'll be, through that. Are you just talking about an ad in the paper? Is that advertising or just website or?
We could advertise twice in the newspaper and consider these the second meeting in July. I think we can still begin the process in August. If you want to give it a little bit more time, if there's not an issue.
Could this be put in the daily update so that people see it every day?
I can certainly visit with. I can certainly visit with, with Ken and, and see if we can get that, get that down, yes, sir.
My comment about the board process, if, if using the same type of thing, is that I would like to see, in this case particularly, for people who apply, there be some way to represent themselves on application of their qualities for this particular task. What they perceive as either, I'm in legal accounting or education, or I've done this before, or I'm very interested in that kind of thing. I'm not sure what the questions ought to be, but when you have just a name and I want to be on this, here's my contract number. I mean, we can, I guess we could interview the one we don't know.
You could ask for a resume.
Resume. What do y'all think, Council? I mean, since, since they are.
This, this, from a point of what they've done, what they, what they're.
What they've done with the city?
Well, I'm.
I, I, I agree with Mayor, that it removes the subjectivity and the qualifications of candidates. That's a great approach. I want to thank the city manager for taking this for action. So appreciate it. What kind of qualifications strike you? Beyond government experience, legal experience, up top civic experience, self-term? This is sort of letting candidate reveal themselves. Because I, this particular task can be done by lots of different kinds of people with lots of different backgrounds and so forth. Okay?
It may be like a paragraph or space, because right now, looking at the current boards and commissions, besides your, you know, biographical information, there's occupational information, but there's nothing else that's in your background.
So may I request, and I think I'm going to get that support here, a, a, a space on the application for them to, to be specific about this task, their qualifications for this task. However, they could be worried. Tim, you have a recommendation? Okay.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Sure.
Since this is an advisory mission, we can't interview them in executive session.
Okay. Thank you for that. It has to be public, o, open session selection. Thank you.
Again, when you look at the professional backgrounds, we've included legal, accounting, education and real estate. If there are any others that you would like to add to that to try to, again, get folks interested, let us know.
Never having done this, I don't know what that leans out. Tim, legal, accounting, education and real estate, anything come immediately to mind? George? Yeah, we got to get you on, on camera and mic.
Yep. Usually, if you're asking for someone to respond with their qualifications, you, you give some clarification about what the job entails. So it might be, in, in your advertising, you would include length of time expected, how many hours or what's involved with the job.
Right. Good. Thank you, George.
Good point. Yeah, I, I think part of the deal is is that people that are appointed to this realize how much time and effort they have to do, and the people that don't show up, we really do need, need to apply.
I strongly agree with that. Eric?
This is a charter for the city government?
Yes.
You're missing anybody who has government experience.
Thank you, sir.
As well as community involvement.
Now we're getting specific. Jeanette?
I was just going to suggest and comment that maybe one sector that's really important, that should be included, is the people. The government's formed by the people. The government serves the people. So I think there should be some room on just some regular people that can get their eyes on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're, uh, let's see, the last one was done in 2016 and we're at seven years, so we're a couple years behind, which is better than 25. Probably need to take a look at this after each legislative session and consider updates every couple of years. And just get on a regular five-year schedule for a complete review.
Yes, sir. I really like the schedule proposed here from, I mean, that you mentioned from last time, just get started in August. I have a six-month time slot, bring back to council in January for hopefully putting it on the ballot next May.
Right.
Yeah. All right, anything else about that?
That is it. Thank you. Anything else, Council?
One question from it. Do all changes to the charter need to go to a vote?
Yes. That's the only way they can be implemented. And I think if you're going to a May election, that you be all ready for an order. So there must be a vote, have a vote every two years. More, you can't have a vote more often than every two years.
This, this might be a silly question, but what if something that the state legislation says is law and it's voted down by the, by the citizens of Fredericksburg?
Well, state law applies if it directly supersedes a conflict with the charter. If they can be read together, they are read together and both apply. It's one that the state law clearly preempts, that it applies regardless of what's in the charter. And that's true today. We have some items in the charter that have.
That's an important point, I think, because that helps indemnify us if we are out of state, the state. Is that correct?
I don't know about indemnifying, but it does, you don't have any problems with it. You just follow state law, regardless of what's in the charter, if it's a direct conflict. So what we do is we evaluate if both provisions, the provision in the charter and the provision in the state law can be read together and both apply. That does apply forgiving, uh, act, forgiving credence to the will of voters locally. What we try to do when we amend charters is make reference to state law where that's applicable. So we don't, like, for instance, the election code. We can't rewrite the election code in Fredericksburg. So we may just ask that the charter be changed to, like, state law applies for elections, for example.
Anything else on that? All right, ready to move on? Eight C, continued discussion regarding the need for affordable housing. This is a, a regular item on our agenda. My goal, primarily with this agenda item on each meeting, is to get an update from you all, because I know that you are doing some investigation on your own into options for this issue and what the proper use of city resources could be toward this issue. Or a, in persuasion of getting other people to do things. I would just say on my part that I'm continuing to look into this. I have a meeting, two meetings this week with different people. And a, and a phone call appointment with the people in McAllen, who have affordable housing in South Texas, which I've mentioned several times as a good model. I don't have anything to report today, because I didn't do anything last week on it, except set these appointments, so I will next time. Randy, you have something?
Yes, sir. I spent roughly three weeks on my SWOT analysis. Most of it is to educate myself, because I, I know very, I knew very little about housing authorities. I think I'm a little smarter, not much. But I had a, a, I think a constructive meeting with a key stakeholder yesterday. I've been asked not to go through the details of the particulars of that, but at this point, I think I'm ready to kind of put a bow on the information. I did do a presentation, if anybody's interested, and I'm still open to having conversations with anyone, but I think that's coming to an end, Mr. Mayor, so I'm happy to provide that to you, or whatever you'd like.
So this was a SWOT on specifically housing authority?
Housing authority in, as a particular tool to solve affordable, affordable house.
I'd love to see. Would you?
Happy to send it out.
Yeah, please do. Thank you. Is that something that you would be willing for the public to see?
I would be very happy. I've actually consulted with Nick on that, what's the appropriate venue, how should I do that, but I'm happy to do whatever is appropriate.
I, I think making it available would be a good thing. Still good questions. Anybody else on the housing, I have some people want to comment on this. Wes? Wes Hasker? Nice to see you again.
So I've been doing my homework as well on public housing, specifically Austin, since you guys covered that last meeting, one took a trip, right? Curious how many of the individuals that live in that public housing you might have met with? Or did you just meet with the public housing authority? Because I think any public housing authority that you go to talk to is going to definitely want to promote the need of those services, right? It's, it's self-sustaining. And the city should be very careful about wanting to expand government into something that has a track record, a history of actually promoting poverty, not improving it. Poverty statistics have gone up since public housing has been created, not down. Government has been unable to solve this problem. And the problem with government is that it takes the humanity out of it, from the people. We had one gentleman who came up here initially, who works in Habitat for Humanities. And I understand his struggles, because they have to finance these. They build them from scratch. But that is the best ownership solution I've seen. If I look at Austin, majority of the people in public housing stay there long-term. The vast majority. The first couple of years, you might have about 20, 25% that are transitory. Most people stay in it for a very long time. And what that would equate to here is you're going to get people who work for Whataburger, who work for Walmart, 20 hours a week. Because the second you issue public housing vouchers, 75% of that has to go to 30%. 75% meaning people who earn, they basically $15 an hour. And they won't work more than 20, 23 hours. So there's an incentive for them to stay on that, and the statistics prove it out. I'm a big statistics guy. I look at the numbers. Because I think it's something that we have to be careful about what we do. The second you take the individual out of the process and you put government on it, it takes the humanity out of things. And we have seen that our government overall has grown to a tremendous size. Communities have gotten less and less involved with the people that are there that need help in working side by side. That's why I like the Habitat for Humanities, you know? Because that's volunteer. It's a community coming together, serving each other, helping, giving each other a leg up. Before the Great Society, that's the way this country worked. And I think it worked better, and the statistics prove it out. It's there. You can look at it. You can go see it. And I would encourage you guys to take care of that, because I think it's a huge mistake to think that government can solve poverty, which has existed the entire course of human existence. It will always be here. So if you're not making it better, then you're making it worse. How is that a net benefit to the community, to the business owners that are going to get a part-time worker, but not the kind of quality people that we want, like firefighters, police officers? They won't qualify. Because 75% of those vouchers have to go to people who are half of that. Half of that are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Jeanette? Jeanette Hormuth?
Yes, I wanted to just speak a little bit about something called the principal subsidiary. I've been in situations, you know, being a single mom, where I've needed help, and I know other people. But going off of what Wes just said, the statistics show, and we know that the bigger government gets, often doesn't really solve the problem, problem gets worse. But for me personally, is I'm concerned about that I'm going to pay for it in my taxes indirectly or directly. Because as government grows, or, you know, you have more and more boards in administration, there's going to be legal costs, all that kind of stuff. In Austin, they spent $83,000 from '22 to '23 on affordable housing. And I asked, who's paying for that? You know, so that's a concern. But the principal subsidiary is that what's best is that the people closest to those in need are the ones that help. Like, it starts with your family. If you lost your job, you need some help, your family helps. And if they're not able to, then it's like the neighbors or the extended family. And if not, then it's like the, your local church. It goes from there, because when, charities should always be voluntary. So when you're helping people, they're more, it's a personal relationship. And it makes the person more accountable and feel more obligated to make it up. You know, it's not like a handout. A handout when the government does it, they're way up here, many layers above. It's impersonal. And there's no need to want to pay it back. It's like, great, I'm just going to sign up. I'm going to keep a low income, because if I go too high, then I'm going to lose this subsidy. And that doesn't solve anything. And then it just grows, and then the people pay for it and we get poor. I'm getting poorer every year, just because of the taxes keep going up. You know, so that's what Habitat for Humanity, that's really wonderful, because everybody, even the homeowners, get involved with fixing their, their house. And I had that happen with me. I wasn't in Habitat for Humanity, but we refixed our house and our neighbors helped and my kids helped and I helped, you know? And the most important thing here in Fredericksburg that draws people here is the community, the small town. So I, I. So I, I, I'm opposed to the government taking over this issue. And I thank you, Mayor Hoover, for your comments last week because I know you're getting a lot of pressure, people want something done quickly. And I think that, um, again, I think it really needs to be thought out, and there are other creative solutions with the private market. Thank you. We already have 1,000 units going up right now. Why don't we wait and see how that helps? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. And then, did you want to present your written comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
So I, your, your difference. Black. Um, because this is a moving target. Um, as, as city council moves along, uh, the research phase of how and if government involvement in housing in Frederickburg would solve a problem or create problems, I would like to suggest the following, and that's why I've given you guys a handout. First of all, I think we need to define the goal. And I may have missed it, but I haven't heard a defined goal. There's differences between affordable housing and low-income housing and et cetera, et cetera. And, and I think we're still, we're, we haven't defined our goal. And if we can't define the goal, we can't define success or failure. So one of those things in defining it would be, who are we helping? And what I would like to hear in the future is, first of all, developing a goal, that it's clear and it's concise, and that that goal be stated before we discuss this issue every time so we can stay on target. Some of the other things I'd like for the council to consider is, I think any proposed solution should have a list of negative consequences and their cost to the community. Will taxes rise? Will law enforcement costs increase? What about the impact on schools? What about housing illegal aliens and becoming a magnet? What will happen to surrounding housing values? Number three, develop a list of questions to ask as you do your site visits so that we're, again, moving towards a goal, and we know what we want to find out instead of just what they want to tell us. Does the solution address private versus public pros and cons? Is there a pathway to ownership, and what is the downside if there is none? With government involvement, ask yourself the question, are we subsidizing local business? Should they be paying higher wages to employees so that they can afford housing? Are we facilitating businesses to keep wages low and therefore placing a higher burden on taxpayers? Any final recommendation should be totally transparent and include a full analysis of the goal, financial impact, both pros and cons, and be presented to the voters for final approval. As you may know, I'm opposed to government solution to the housing problem. I believe that the free market will always be the best solution. When government gets involved, it disrupts the free market and ultimately puts the burden on the taxpayers. However, I would like to suggest that in order to make an informed decision, that all factors be considered. Please remember, the devil is in the details. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeanette. Council, I will commit to you by, uh, that the next meeting, this agenda item, I will present some substantive talking points, too. And rather than just leaving us an open discussion and getting, um, I will commit to doing that and invite any of you others to do that as well. Any further discussion on that issue? All right. Number nine, city manager's report.
Okay, Mayor Council, this is the city manager, comprehensive city manager update I've been talking about for the last couple of months. And the idea with this update is to provide the council just a little bit of information about what all is going on in the city organization. As you're driving around town, as you see developments happening, as you see projects going on, I would like to provide you with enough information to be able to answer questions when you bump into people at H E B, or just at least know what is coming out of the ground, what's going on. So this is intended to be about a 10 to 15-minute update. The format of this information will change. We're working on developing trend lines and providing, you know, kind of a snapshot of what's been going on for the last five years on the financial side, for instance. A lot of the development update that I'll be giving, we're adding trend lines to that as well, so you can see how things change over time. Um, I'm going to provide a lot of background information to you in the future. I'll get this out to you beforehand, where if you have any questions about anything specific, we have a lot of folks in the room that will be able to answer those questions. But I'll just hit the highlights as we go through. Generally, these are the different categories that I'll be touching on, starting with development, uh, city projects that include public works and parks projects primarily. I'll give you a financial update, just hit the highlights there, and then I have a miscellaneous catch-all, uh, section, uh, that I'll provide a lot of information, fire, M S, P V, vacancies, things like that. So jumping right in on the development side and breaking that down, residential, single-family, multifamily, talking a little bit about commercial, short terminals, and I'll ask Anna to provide you an update on the comprehensive plan. But this is what single-family residential subdivisions that are, that have been constructed, that are being planned, uh, that are approved, uh, looks like. This gives you a list of all of those subdivisions. We're working on a legible map where you can see these things across town like we did in the city-county, uh, development update meeting. But you can see, most importantly, the number of units, uh, whether the lots are sold, whether the subdivision is under construction, homes are under construction, uh, exactly what the status is. I'll pause here for just a second.
Just to let you brief your guess. Quick request, just for the math challenge, give you a total on the bottom, just so we can quickly figure out the total number of the planning.
Right. This is one of the slides. We don't have a total number of units on. Uh, I'll ask Anna to, to add that, add that up. Thank you. All right. Moving on, multifamily, and we do have totals here. We've been talking about this a lot. This includes apartments, duplexes, townhomes, condominiums. So 583 under construction currently. 70 recently completed, 371 approved or construction that has not initiated to date. So a number of these types of units coming online, Friendship Lane, you see a lot of those there. That is the, and help me out here, Anna, the 1846 luxury apartments and the Woodland cottages, uh, for a total of 296 units on Friendship Lane. Okay, moving on to commercial, and again, this includes.
Interject a quick question, sir. Go back to the, so, at the meeting last night, the, the comment was made that there are over 500 apartments being approved and being constructed. Is that this?
I think that was 500 hotel rooms. Was that? Uh, 409, I think, is the number that P and Z approved, the last meeting that the council will see coming up.
509 hotel rooms.
The hotel rooms were approved, they won't come to council because it was just a site plan review.
Just a site plan review. Thank you, Anna.
So what I want to ask you about this multifamily thing is, I see Eagles Village S T Rs and Friendship Lane S T Rs are all the rest of, are, I assume, uh, ready for rentals, or I guess townhomes and condos can be lived in. Should we consider this to be an, uh, response to our housing issue?
Well, that is, that is what I have called, especially the apartments. And I've had some disagree with me, but when we look at just the apartments, we have 525, give or take, under construction currently with another 300 or so that are approved for construction that will likely begin construction sometime in the next year or so. So about 800. We, we currently have, and help me out with this number, Anna, since 2019, we've had about 800 units total available in terms of apartment units in Fredericksburg. So we're, we're essentially doubling that.
Doubling it, yeah.
That stock.
So, so one of the, I've, I've pressed at least one developer recently in doing my analysis because I'm trying to figure out where in the, the spectrum, uh, the rent is going to fall in, and I get, uh, pushback, and I'll just be polite and say that. So my question to you is, when these are approved, do, do we do a review of the business plan that, hey, the A S P of, of rent is going to be 850, that's a number? Do we do that, or are we just hoping that they fit that spot that we're looking?
A lot of times, it's their market rate. We, we really don't have any control over the rates. I can tell you that there is a, a pretty good mix of, um, one-bedroom, one-bath and two-bedroom, uh, two-bath units, two-bedroom, one-bath units. That's the kind of information we'd like to provide a little bit more detail to the council regarding, uh, those specifics. In the future, we have some of that, uh, information, but in terms of the rents, as, as we get that information, we will definitely let the council know as part of this update what that looks like. We've heard numbers. For instance, the, the one-ones, we've heard $1,0100 a month, and the, the two-ones, two-twos, we've heard 1,500, 1,800 a month market.
I think that'd be helpful. I'm, in no way, shape, or form am I saying we should dictate pricing. That's the market. I'm just, I'd like to know for the work process here, where does that fall, and what's the market demanding right now? That's all.
Sure. You bet.
Well, to a next point of, of defining the problem, um, I'm assuming that these developers are not going to build these properties unless they have a really good idea they're going to be built, they're going to be rented, built. So they must be, they had to do some market analysis of our local market, right? I, I'm, I'm not looking for any particular answer, except why wouldn't we consider this an appropriate response to what is considered an affordable housing shortage, or challenge to, um, keeping, getting and keeping good employees? I'm confused. Right? Does anybody know why this shouldn't be considered part of the, part of the solution?
I, I think it should. I think, and Tim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, if an apartment complex is being built or it even opens, it's pretty much leased out. And I'll be curious to see how the, these, the leasing of these properties happens. If it fills up before it opens, um, I think that's an answer. Uh, it takes a long time to fill them up, but if these fill up, what happened if we see the older apartment complexes starting to have vacancies? Um, I know that's part of the market, but I think it's also part of the answer, so.
These that are under construction, are, is this going to be like next year?
Probably.
You have a timeline on the Friendship Lane? Algarita Park, uh, Berens Park.
So the Algaritas, the old Tri, TriStar, TriCare over on Live Oak, and they are ready, the rehab building is actually about ready for their C O. The new construction's a little, a few weeks behind. The Berens Park apartment, that's on, on Ufer Street, that's Ken Car's project, they just got their building permit. Seiko, again, hasn't started. Botanica has not started. What we were calling at the reserve at, at Vineyard Oaks, went to P and Z last week or last meeting and did not get approved, but we expect them to come back. Orchard Grove, you've seen that work, they've not gone vertical yet, but they've got their plumbing in. The 1840, or 1846 luxury apartments, those are the two on Friendship that are going up pretty quickly. The village, Eagle Villages, we, you know, those were actually short-term rentals as were the.
Well, I'm asking about the ones that are in the blue, beyond construction.
And what's the bottom one?
West Live Oak.
Uh, West Live Oak, yeah.
Right, and those are the ones across from the old TriStar next to St. Vincent's, so they're going vertical as well. So all, all moving pretty quickly.
Okay.
So again, Mayor, I think that, uh, all these developers probably have a pretty good business plan. You know, it is, development, any kind of construction right now is costly and it's risky if, if you're not pretty sure those, those are going to fill up.
I, I know that it won't solve our problem.
Right.
But, you know, we don't have a solution. But I'm just saying, that's, that's a lot of apartments.
As Tim mentioned during his update, these have been, the apartments, the apartment stock we've had in Fredericksburg have generally been 98-plus percent occupied. So it'll be very interesting, once these open, to see how quickly they fill up and who's occupying them. You know, the unintended consequence of a similar large affordable housing apartment project down in Fort Aransas was that they built it for the service industry workers that commute from Corpus and other towns, and what ended up happening, happening when they opened was people from all over the United States that were looking for that type of housing moved to, to Fort A, and they didn't get all that many service industry workers filling those units. So it'll be interesting to see who these are occupied by.
Well, thank you for letting me interrupt you. I know you were giving us the rundown of your.
You bet. Now, stop me on any slide. Again, moving on to the commercial side, this includes everything from the Fredericksburg Middle School, hotels, retail, uh, and other projects. Again, just to give you an idea of what this list looks like, uh, starting with the middle school right across the street from, um, you know, the sizable apartment complex, that's going to completely change the complexion of that entire area. Lot of dirt being mowed around there. Uh, we have, of course, have the Immigrant Hotel that is under construction. We have the Albert Hotel, uh, large project that's under construction, um, a few being planned, of course, the Vineyard Hills R B Park, I think everyone's familiar with, with that project. Mylum Street Market, open, two businesses, uh, currently occupying space there. Anything else you might have a question about here? Just wanted to give you an idea, again, of the commercial activity going on currently.
I thought that the gym had canceled, but they're still moving forward?
They're back on, yes, declining gym on Friendship Lane. The total number for single-family is 1,221.
1,221.
That does include things like, um, Oaks at Windcrest and Crab Apple that have been completed for a little while, but in recent years, that's, that's the total number of completed and approved.
That's single-family?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. And then finally, just an update on short-term rental numbers. I have both the permit status and permit type here. 675 active permits. These permits aren't in any phase of renewal or review. They are active cleared permits. 27 permits that have been withdrawn, 25 that have been closed, um, did not, um, apply for a renewal, decided to let go of their permit, get out of the business, whatever the case may be. We have 200 that are pending. This is primarily the, the backlog, and if you'll remember, we started with about 600. Uh, we've gone from about a 14-step process to, um, in many cases, about a two-step process for a lot of these renewals that are, you know, very simple to, um, to just work through the system. Uh, there's 124 under review. A lot of these are renewals that come through every month. That is about the number of monthly renewals that we have coming through this time. Uh, we have 189 expired permits, 52 that have been denied for, um, one reason or another, or again, a total of just under 1,300 permits. And you can see on the permit type side, the vast majority are, uh, the non-conforming S T Rs.
So the expired.
Go ahead. What's the definition, non-conforming?
So the 2022 ordinance essentially created the non-conforming. Because the 2018 ordinance, we just had one type of permit, right? And then in the 2022, 2022 ordinance, we created a variety of type of S T R permits, unoccupied S T R, B and B. So anything that was pretty, that was 2018 is now a non-conforming. So anything that was pretty, that was twenty-eighteen is now a non-conforming.
On the um, expired, the one thing I've been concerned with is inactives out in the market sitting there. Um, have you noticed it's a challenge? Is that what that represents?
Yes, sir. I know a number of those are, and I had that conversation with Jan last night after the meeting. Uh, a lot of those are the beyond ninety days, uh, no activity.
Thank you.
That's true. Okay, moving on to Public Works projects. And this first project, I'm sure everyone has seen as you've tried to drive across town, um, and uh, get down one lane of traffic westbound, uh, Main Street, the East Main Street Waterline Project. Uh, the good news about this project is when it, the bids came in, it was significantly under budget. Uh, these projects are always uh, going to impact traffic. We just don't have enough room to have four full lanes right there. Um, but what this will result in uh, is a new line in this section where we have had main breaks for a number of years, patches uh, that have caused a very rough surface. Techstock will follow up after this project, uh, repave that portion of the roadway. And hopefully we will not have any issues for years to come. But the limits of this project, Crystal Drive by the UPS store uh, to Berens Creek Bridge on the natural grocery side of the bridge. So that entire section of line will be replaced. About fifty percent of the plot project has been completed. The completion date is September uh, twenty-three. Chris, do you think we're going to finish up a little bit ahead of that twenty-three September timeframe?
They're making great progress right now. Um, they are filling the, the section between the South Heights, uh, which is by Eagle Street, by Ace Hardware. All the way back to Crystal Drive, they're doing their pressure testing, back tees. Uh, when all that um, is approved, they will start connecting those services for that section. So although they've made a lot of good progress over the last six weeks, I would say, project will slow just a little bit as they're making those connections, uh, doing the, the pavement repairs. And then they'll get going again um, on the uh, next section moving into town. I do think they'll meet that September um, project deadline, though. I don't think it'll be earlier than that, but I do think they'll meet the project schedule.
So thank you all for your patience as you drive past this every, every single day. It's a big project, and we're trying to get it done. We have a lot of leaks out there. We're really trying to address a big issue. Moving on to landfill cell number nine, and this uh, project has been completed. Again, this project was uh, under our, um, our budget, under our estimate. Um, and this has been approved by the TCEQ a little bit earlier this month. So this is one of the larger cells. This is actually the last large cell uh, in the landfill here. Uh, useful life of this cell?
Uh, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we have about twelve and a half years of life currently in the, in the facility.
Okay, moving on.
We'll be talking more about the future shortly.
Bet. Moving on to our annual paving project. Um, this is a project that's really ongoing year-round. We do level up work um, ahead of the actual paving work that's done during the hot months of the summer. Um, we have made a material purchase, sizable material purchase to date. We do all of this work in-house. We have complete control over this. We're likely going to begin paving in the August, September timeframe uh, due to some delays in getting out and getting that level up work uh, done a little bit earlier. So again, wrapping this up uh, in the very early fall, we try to try to apply a seal coat to all of our streets on about a ten-year cycle. Uh, again, uh, something that Fredericksburg has always done a very good job of maintaining streets. And then finally, the Frontier Fiber Construction Project. I know this is something that comes up, coffee with the city manager, town hall meetings. I'm sure you're asked about. Um, the overall project is about seventy-five percent completed. Know some folks that have tied into the service that um, are, are very happy with the service. I don't know if the council has any experience with the service itself, but I think it's a good service to the, the community. Okay, moving on to uh, parks projects. Of course, one project that is not on air is the Splash Pad, which opened on the twenty-third of last month. Is that correct, Andrew? Uh, starting at the top here with uh, market plots renovations on the northwest corner of the square, about a two million dollar project. Eight hundred forty-five thousand paid out to date. Uh, construction completion toward the end of this year. Um, we have completed the tennis court resurfacing project, budgeted about forty-eight thousand. Uh, the actual cost was twenty-nine. And you can see some of the, the smaller projects and equipment listed here, uh, included in the budget. Uh, it, it appears that some of our equipment is being delivered. However, we have some pending deliveries if, as we have talked uh, with the council previously, especially the large pieces of equipment, fire trucks and things like that. Uh, long lead times on a lot of this equipment. Any questions on parks, equipment or projects? Okay, moving on to financial updates. And before we jump into this, uh, we, we have three different time periods that we're providing data uh, within, through April, through May and through June. So through April, that's about fifty-eight percent of the year. Through May, about two-thirds or sixty-seven percent. And then when we're talking about June numbers, about seventy-five percent. So when we look at totals through April, uh, general fund and enterprise fund, actual versus budget. Uh, in the general fund, we're at seventy percent of our revenue. That's fifty percent of our expenses. In the enterprise funds, um, actual versus budget, fifty-six percent of the revenue, and I'll provide a little bit more detail. Uh, in just a minute on that, uh, forty-nine percent of our expenses. So this is what sales tax collections look like as of June. So again, the May timeframe through May uh, to June first, that's about sixty-seven percent. Our actual is about six point eight million, and collections were a total budgeted amount of eight point eight. So we're at seventy-seven, roughly seventy-seven percent of that total currently.
I'm sorry, let me try to understand. Is that, the budget is eight point eight million for the entire year?
Yes.
Just year-to-date?
That's correct, for the entire year.
I apologize for asking you to go back one. Uh, when we did the hot distribution the other day, we went over a little bit, and I'm assuming that came out of the tourism line. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have the same question, Emily. So just taking a look at uh, sales tax, the red line at the very top is twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the blue line just under that generally is twenty-twenty-two, both really, really good years, but you can see almost uh, every month, month over month, we're performing even better than we did uh, the last couple of years. Again, when we look at the, the total uh, sales tax uh, numbers, on average, we're up about six percent over twenty-twenty-two. So this is where we get into the uh, enterprise fund, starting with electric. And this all has to do with weather. When people are using the most electricity, which we're going to see a, probably a huge spike beginning this month uh, with the very high temperatures, but I just wanted to give you an idea, this is through April. Um, about fifty-eight percent of the budget, or about sixty point five percent of a fourteen point five million dollar budget in terms of revenues. And you can see on the upper left, uh, the graph, uh, that is residential revenue. Just to the right of that is commercial revenue. Those graphs almost exactly mirror the consumption, consumption, but again, when you look at the blue line in this case, uh, you can see due to the lower temperatures, we have just a little bit less revenue this time of the year than last year. We had a very hot spring going into the sun, hot and dry.
Clinton, are you able to provide this for us uh, prior to the meetings?
Yes, sir, and next time I, I will do that along with a lot of other information.
I have old eyes.
Yes, sir. And again, on the um, water revenue side, about fifty-eight point eight percent of a ten point six million dollar budget through April. Uh, there were some questions about water revenues going to stage four. We're actually tracking uh, pretty well. We're a little bit behind, but we're getting into some of those very intensive watering months. Uh, as we're saving, trying to save twenty percent on our water consumption, and it looks like we're on target to do that. We will likely see a little bit of a reduction in revenues, but again, as you look at the, the blue line. Uh, again, this has a lot to do with the weather and temperatures. The red line above that is last year. People were watering a lot earlier because it was very dry and very hot early on. We feel very confident as we track this through the year that we will uh, end up very close to that hundred percent revenue, a number, uh, we might be just a little bit under that.
Well, you, you attribute it to weather, but also I think March is when we went to stage four, correct? So it's a pretty dramatic.
Right, and that's the twenty percent. So going from stage three to stage four, the target is a twenty percent reduction in that water consumption. Uh, sixty to seventy percent of that consumption comes from outdoor residential irrigation. Um, we gave an update to the council, uh, a month after we went into stage four, and we were right at about eighteen percent reduction. So we're, we're keeping up with that and tracking that. We're about eighteen percent reduction in consumption overall. So we're tracking that, but that will definitely affect those revenues in the end. I don't know if it'll be quite that twenty percent number or not. Okay, jumping to Police Department, and we do have um, our chief, I think, and a lieutenant uh, in the room here. And again, I just wanted to give you a, a sense of the number of calls uh, that the Police Department receives on a monthly basis. We've heard on an annual basis, they get about twenty thousand calls. So fourteen hundred eighty-five uh, calls in May. You can see the distribution from January to May. Uh, average response time, a little bit over six minutes, average time on a call, an hour and almost thirty-three minutes. That is twenty-three hundred one hours of time spent on calls. The average employee works, puts in two thousand eighty hours a year. Just to give you an idea of how much time that is on these calls. Okay, jumping to citations and warnings, seven hundred forty-six. You can see six forty-six, six hundred forty-six warnings, one hundred citations, and you can see the, the graph showing the trend. We're actually down just a little bit. Um, on the warning side, uh, up just a little bit on the citation side from January of this year.
Does that include, is it strictly police, or does that include code violations, or is that a different slide?
Getting the code violations, last slide.
So I didn't read it ahead of promise?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So moving on, traffic accidents, sixty during the month of May, fifty-three were minor, seven were major. Again, you can see the trend starting in January, um, very high, uh, tapering down uh, the last couple of months. May twenty-twenty-three arrests. Thirty-seven individuals booked for a total of fifty-three charges. And again, you can look at the, uh, the trend line from uh, January through May right there. And finally, code enforcement activity, uh, one hundred sixty code violations, and this is the breakdown. Uh, there have been some questions about how many uh, watering violations have been issued. I, I don't have a specific breakdown for uh, short-term rentals. Is Chief still, yeah, and I, I, I think Chief was going to, to speak to uh, STR-specific violations. We spoke last night. Uh, Chief indicated that there has not been a noise violation um, in the last month. Am I, am I correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Any other questions for the Chief on code enforcement? Okay, animal control intake, hundred twelve. You can see the breakdown, thirty-eight animals reclaimed or adopted. That number is up significantly, um, from what we've seen since January, Chief. Is there a reason for the increase in this number? You can also see the, uh, the breakdown, city versus county.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Yes, the dramatic increase in the month of May is we have uh, aggressively started trapping feral cats in in communities or populations of feral cats where we have received many, many complaints from business owners or residents. So that, there was a total of um, I believe, forty, uh, forty to forty-five cats um, just last month in one form or fashion. So um, addressing those problem areas, which is the dramatic increase for the numbers.
Is that an annual problem?
I'm sorry?
Is that an annual problem?
It, 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 yes, sir. It's an ongoing problem with, with feral cat population throughout town.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the fire EMS report, and again, we do have our uh, chief in, in the uh, room here. Again, just trying to give you an idea of what our uh, call volumes look like. Um, this is during the month of May, uh, three hundred nine incidents for an average of ten per day. For those of you that hear the um, the vehicles leaving uh, the station, um, it ranges from a low of three per day up to seventeen per day. Um, so it, it varies all times of the day and night. Again, this is uh, year-to-date, sixteen hundred seventy-two incidents, an average of three hundred thirty-four uh, per month. Have this slide up there comparing it to the um, January through May twenty-twenty-two, where we had sixteen hundred sixty-nine for an average of three hundred thirty-four. Again, jumping back to twenty-three, uh, the incident number jumped up just a little bit. You can see the line there. EMS incidents, year-to-date through May twenty-twenty-two versus uh, twenty-three categorized. Um, the twenty-three numbers are in orange for medical, up just a little bit from twenty-two, trauma, lypthysist calls, about the same. Our transfers are up just a little bit. Um, just a side note, when we talked about Methodist being local, those transfer numbers really should be coming down in the future. Um, we have not seen that so far. Moving vehicle violations and then all, I mean, um, accidents, and then all other incidents at the very end. And this is the transfers per month. We had been trending down uh, since January, up a little bit in May. These are the transfer locations. The total transfers, of course, are up from twenty-twenty-two. Local transfers, Austin, the majority of them going to San Antonio.
Are the transfers where we use our vehicles to transfer somebody from our location to a different location?
Yes. And that takes that ambulance out of service sometime for many hours.
What's the local transfers?
Lynn, do you want to speak to local transfers?
Take them to Stonewall? Okay, so our, our local transfers are usually from the nursing home to the hospital?
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Okay, brushfire season. This has been tapering off just a little bit because we have had the rainfall. But with the hot temperatures coming up, a lot of the growth out there, I, I know there is a concern about a, a repeat of the last couple of years. Uh, so again, as that vegetation starts dying off, this trend line will start going back up likely. Okay, and this is what the distribution looks like, both fire EMS calls, the fire in red, uh, EMS calls in blue across the county.
Uh, Chief, as far as the neighboring counties or any of those in a fire burn ban right now? No, sir. The way that our burn ban works is it's countywide, or, and we don't, we don't go to individual precincts and do the burn ban. Once the burn ban is, is on, it's for the whole county. Once the burn ban is on, it's for the whole county.
Okay, moving on to health department, just a snapshot of what the health department has been up to. A lot of this is just very routine, special events inspected. We've had a lot of special events going on from the systems go rocket event to crawfish recently. Again, just to provide you with some of that background.
What, what is the, I'm sorry, the six new mobile health permits, what is that?
Mobile health permit, like a mobile food truck permit. Yes, thank you. And then finally, I just got this information on the way over here. Open positions within the city. We currently have eighteen vacant positions with two more coming on in the coming months due to retirements. The breakdown, we have an accountant position, Krista's former position in the finance department. We have had that position posted now for a little bit over a month, a couple of months, and we've had one application. Fire EMS, we have a captain position vacant due to Stacy's passing. An E M T firefighter opening due to a recent resignation. In the parks department, we have one full-time crew worker, one part-time crew worker, and an additional crew worker in November due to a retirement that will be coming up. In the police department, five police officers, five vacancies. And the animal control officer vacant due to pending resignation in July. Animal control supervisor that will be retiring in September. Water department, three crew workers, one crew chief, master electrician. We've had our staff engineer position posted for four months, three months? Zero applications for that position. And I think that position probably pays over a hundred thousand. And finally, the street department, we have heavy equipment specialist or possibly a crew worker position vacancy due to a retirement in May. So when we talk about professional positions in the organization, whether you're talking about finance, engineering, planning, whatever the case may be, it's very difficult to fill these positions. In fact, we were just having a conversation with an engineering consulting firm. They're having a very difficult time finding people right now to getting projects done, following up and following through on things. Tech dot is having a difficult time hiring people and keeping people to manage the projects with all the money that they have across the state. So this continues to be an issue, not only locally, but across the state, it seems.
Is there a general reason why you think this is, these things are hard to fill?
Well, we, we really don't know. I know a lot of cities have had a lot of these positions posted for months on end. We, we talked about a lot of the engineering positions, a lot of the planning positions being gobbled up by the volume of development that is happening, not only in the state of Texas, but across the U.S. right now. The oil field industry consumes some of those positions. Some people just may not be working. We don't have the exact stats on that, but it's, it's, it's very difficult to attract these folks into our organization. So we're, we're getting creative, and we'll be talking to the council a little bit more about housing incentives, specifically for people in our organization, things like that.
You, you do the routine salary studies.
Absolutely.
We're in line.
Yes, sir. Okay, we are in line. Trying to get creative with employee referrals. We have that program in place now that's been very successful. Again, just looking for, we're talking about remote work opportunities for those employees that can do that and just trying to make the organization and all the options a little bit more attractive to a, a, a more, a broader cross-section of, of potential applicants.
Just thinking through back to the pay portion of private sector, 401K versus city pensions, are we level in that respect as well, or are we looking back?
I think we're pretty competitive when it comes to retirement benefits and other benefits. Yes, sir. In fact, talking to some smaller organizations, entities in Fredericksburg, we do have much better benefits. The city and the county both have really good benefits. But that is the, the presentation again. I just, I, I want to be able to package this up where I can give a, just a brief, high-level update to the council. So you, you have a really good idea of what's going on across the organization, what's going on across the city. But at the same time, providing a lot more information prior to the meeting in case you do have a question about some of that, that detail. So we'll continue to build on this. I wanted to get this in front of you right now. And again, it's just for your information. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any, yeah, thank you, but any comments about this? Yes, I think that's excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for doing this. I love it, and I, I love that we're going to be able to track over time. It's very helpful to see trends. And two things I would like to see added in some way, potentially on the development side, is something with the site plan reviews, since those don't come before council. If there's some way, maybe quarterly or something, that we could have kind of a list of what's going through the process. Relatedly, a lot of the projects have been approved a long time ago. Would it be helpful to y'all if we maybe had, like, this was approved back in twenty-seventeen? Now they're breaking ground or something like that? Because when I hear from people, they say, well, what did y'all approve? Because I'm seeing dirt, and I'm like, yeah, of course. So that'd be great. Thanks.
So what we would really like to also have is an interactive map where we can show you all of these projects, where they are within the city. Again, just to give you a better understanding of where it's happening. So we're working on it as well.
I think this was a great report, very informative, not only to us, but also appreciate.
Yes, sir.
General, general hearing question.
Okay.
It'd be very easy to answer, but I've been driving through town lately, and I've seen our, what I'm going to call our gas flaring towers all over town on the corners. And I assume that that is the fiber optics that are the broadband, is that correct?
Yes, those are the AT&amp;T five G nodes.
Okay, what is attached to them these days and why?
So, so we heard that question yesterday, reached out to Tech Dot. It's actually some traffic counting equipment that Tech Dot hasn't solved, so it's just temporary.
Okay, had nothing to do with the fact that it's working or it's not?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, Eric. Okay. That was a great.
Mayor, may I interrupt for a minute? In citizen comment, remember, we're not to respond from the elected officials.
Thank you.
That was a great report. Could I ask that it be made, posted somewhere so that people who aren't in the meeting can actually see the report was just given? It talks about all the projects that are underway, you know, all the things that are being done. It's presented to the council, which is great, but as you pointed out, Bobby, it's would be great information for the citizens as well to answer a lot of questions you might get otherwise.
And if I'm, I might be able to repeat, counsel, this will be included in the agenda packet in the future. And we always post presentations along with the minutes.
Yeah, Clinton, that was great. Thanks. There was one thing, and I don't know if I'm confused or if it's just not on there, but I believe there was a big project on friendship that decided there was going to be an overbuilt situation in Fredericksburg. And so they, they did all their plumbing and stuff, but now they're covering it back up. And so I don't know if that was included in the slide, but I would like to see it included in the slide because if we reach a situation and we find that the new apartments are being filled up and there's a need for more, then we've already got something that's already started, already got the groundwork and the plumbing done. All they need to do is just go. So that's a resource that we have, although it's kind of on hold. Okay, thanks.
Clarification from Mick, as the presider, I want to make sure I'm clear. I, when we have smaller crowds and citizen in participation in the meeting, I don't want to violate any particular rule. They're, it's okay to recognize them to comment, but we're not even answer a question like he did.
No, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits that because it's not, unless it's an item posted on the agenda. So if the rest of the community has not been notified, that an item of public business may occur or there may be some deliberation about it. So it's actually Attorney General opinion J C one oh nine, as well as the Texas Open Meeting Act makes it clear. All you can respond is to refer the citizen to staff or to make a statement about current existing city policy. Okay, can't be any interaction with the citizen on an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, so just to be clear, the appropriate way to handle Mr. Dooley would have been to say, Mr. Garrett, I mean, Mr. Bond, to say, see me, talk to me later, or?
Yeah, well, that would be preferred because that's what the statute requires.
Okay. Yeah, but is it okay if, if I follow suit with what I'm doing to allow people who have not signed up to comment on a particular item? Is that, is that too loose for open meetings?
If it's an item on the agenda, citizens can't, you, the chair can't have, except comment. But if there's an item on, that's not posted on the agenda for public business, citizens haven't been notified, you may be deliberating or considering anything about that item. And remember, we've discussed before, participation is merely sitting and listening. So you just cannot respond.
So recognize them is a privilege that I don't have to.
You do not have to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Okay, lifeguard update, Andrea.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. Well, we had our class last week in between recruitment, increasing the pay and the class. We were able to add six more lifeguards to the staff. So we did start swimming lessons and swim team yesterday morning. So it's, hopefully, we'll get into a little bit of a routine here. We're up to twenty-four lifeguards and five cashiers. Even with twenty-four lifeguards, we still have, are going to have days where a lot of them aren't going to be able to work. For example, Father's Day, we had most of the guards say they could not work that day. So we closed one of the pools and kept the other one open so that we had something for the public to use. Right now, the pools are opening at seven-thirty in the morning, Monday through Friday, and then we close at seven, unless we have a pool party, and then it's nine o'clock. So last night, yesterday was a seven-thirty to nine o'clock day for some of the pools at least. So things are going okay. We're moving forward. We're going to work with Lee Foigee to make sure that when we do have closures, hopefully, we can get the notice out ahead of time so everybody knows that one or the other of us will be closed for the day. But we are in pretty good shape, in better shape than we were a few weeks ago, that's for sure. So I appreciate us being able to increase the pay. Everything's going well right now.
Are both pools opening seven-thirty?
No, just, just Park Pool. The Wellness Center, Create Healthy, decided they weren't going to use the pools this summer. They have one class that they're using at Park Pool, so we don't have Town Pool open in the mornings, just Park Pool.
Andrea, I've gotten personal calls and emails on, on the amount of work that you and your team are doing. So thank you for what you're doing.
I'll pass that on. Caitlin and Haley have really been putting in a lot of time, so thank you. I'll pass that on.
Same for me. Huge thanks for stepping in and dealing with these wonderful people who deal with children during the summer because I know we had a short turnaround on business problems. And to Mr. Bailey for approving a quick increases in their hourly pay that obviously was part of the solution. So thank you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm teasing you, George. We can't talk back.
I personally know, I personally know some of the young lifeguards that are doing this work, and they're very happy with organization and how well it's working. And they've just been doing this since, so kudos.
Thanks for that. All right. Item number ten, items for future agenda, review the future agenda spreadsheet.
Okay, Mayor, Council, we have just a couple of items on the agenda. Minutes from this meeting, we have street closure requests. And then we have citizen input on the F Y twenty-twenty-four budget, which is a public hearing. Additionally, we would like to add an executive session item. Mick, do you want to speak to the executive session item?
Yeah, we'd like to give the council an update on claims we've received threatening litigation, or threatening litigation on S T R programs.
And then finally, we will add the charter review committee selection to this meeting, or would you like second meeting in July? First meeting?
I think we can be ready next time.
We'll kick it out and. And that is it.
We have a town hall meeting Thursday.
Yes, sir.
A question on the citizen input on the budget. Will it be published so they can make comments on specifics, or is it just in general?
Just general public input on the twenty-twenty-four budget and budget process. Would you like something else?
If I were commenting, I'd want to know figures.
You can make a request if you like.
Do we, I mean, are we close to having a draft out? Can you mail me with the process? It's what's, I don't have the budget calendar in front of me, but when do we talk specifics?
It'd be possible to have a first run. And at, at this point, we really don't have a, a good idea what the budget is going to look like. The council has a lot of decisions to make based on information that we provide to you and a lot of deliberations, budget meetings that we will have. We can provide a, a level of background on the current budget. And again, a refresh on the priorities leading into that discussion. But this is one of the required public hearings required by state law in kicking off the, the budget process. We typically in years past haven't had a lot of input on this item. It's generally, you know, if someone has a thought on the way the council has been establishing its tax rate or they have a comment about sales tax performance or maybe their, their, their water bill or a certain project they would like to recommend the council consider. That's really what this is for, is to, to, to make, allow the opportunity for the public to make general comments about the budget and the process. But we can provide whatever background information the council would prefer, again, leading into that discussion.
Great. I believe there was something in the software we purchased that was going to be online where someone could go and put in how much they pay in taxes, and it would go out to see what, where are we in that process?
So that's, we threw open gun, and we have set up some dashboards internally, but we do not have anything published on the website yet for like the specifics like you just mentioned.
When will it be published?
I don't have a date in mind. I would like to have it at about the time that we send the proposed budget out for everyone to see about the same time. So it would say mid-July.
I would like to request, official request of you. Okay. Anything else about future agendas? That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Counsel, anything else about anything we've covered in this session? And there being no further business, we are adjourned.